Evening, everyone. Welcome to this Springersbury Township Board of Supervisors meeting. On our first day, we have pledged to the flag, please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberate, and justice for all. All right, with mission report, I would like to move item twelve B R. It says, resolution number twenty twenty four dash thirty.
I move the adoption of resolution twenty point four dash three as a condition. Charles A. Roush.
Second.
I have a motion and a second on favor.
Aye.
Charlie, could you join me in front of the room, please? Good to see you. So, as you may all know, Charlie announces retirement. He will remain of council, but is no longer sitting up here with us. So, we wanted to do a resolution for him to thank him. And this is just a few lines. This doesn't even begin to touch the impact that he's packed, that he's been in all of our lives. I know that when I was a young board member, I think I was calling you daily.
Yeah.
We had some unique situations going on, but your counsel was tremendously appreciated. And I said before, thank you for keeping me out of trouble with myself.
That was my job.
Yeah.
By the way, I know what you said, it was Mark Raymond.
Oh, did you? You don't trust your new guy, huh? So, let me read resolution.
Good stuff.
Twenty 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 four dash thirty, recognition of Charles A. Roush Esquire. Whereas, and I'm gonna say Charlie.
That's fine.
Whereas Charlie was appointed township solicitor on January seventh, two thousand and two, and continued in that position until December thirty one, two thousand and twenty three. And whereas Charlie served the citizens of Springersbury Township for twenty one years with dedication and faithful service. And whereas Charlie began his retirement as lead counsel for the Board of Supervisors on Springersbury Township on December thirty first, two thousand and twenty three. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Supervisors of Springersbury Township on behalf of all the citizens of Springersbury Township. Acknowledge sincere gratitude and appreciation to Charles A. Roush for his years of dedication and faithful public service and wish him and his wife Toni much happiness and good health. Adopted this twenty second day of February, two thousand and twenty four, signed by the Board of Supervisors.
Oh, my gosh, thank you. Thank you, thank you. I don't know where the time went, you know, twenty one years, boy, and the boards, you know, it's been an honor and a privilege. The boards have accomplished an awful lot, I was thinking back on it, you know. Gosh, acquiring camp security, creating the offer, connecting Concord Road and Davies Drive to East Market Street. Casino, right? It's been, it's been, and gosh, everything in between. So, it's been a real, it's been a real ride, and I've loved every minute of it. And I hadn't, if I had known what I was getting into, I think, back in two thousand and two, I might have hesitated, but we plowed through it. I mean, I, I learned an awful lot. And you're gonna be in great hands with James, so that makes me feel very good. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge Don Bishop and Bill Shang for being instrumental in hiring me back in two thousand and two. And I often reminded them that was the smartest decision they ever made. All right. So, thanks again, and, you know, Springersbury will always be in my heart. And, you know, the board members, I can't tell you, you know, it's one thing, you know, to be in a profession and provide legal services, but I'll tell you, it's, it's priceless to make friendships, and that's, that's what's important. So, and that will continue, so, thank you very much.
Thanks, Charlotte.
I had himself.
Yeah, I know. I started getting changed.
I know where you're interested, so we'll try.
You gonna sneak out?
Yeah.
All right, we have had no executive sessions since the last meeting, and I'm planning for tonight, I assume. So, at this point, I'd like to open up the floor to communication from citizens. If there's anyone in the audience here, or if there's anyone in attendance on Zoom that would like to click the raise hand button. I guess Charlie Stewart doesn't wanna talk to us. All right, then we'll move on to engineering reports, environmental engineering.
Good evening. Nothing to update or change on the plan or the report that we submitted, so we'd be happy to ask. Has there any questions?
It's like we moved a lot of earth for the sewer line change over there on eighty three.
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping to report that Ebert's crossing was done, but we're ever so close, but not quite done yet.
Thank you. Civil engineering, John.
I don't have many additions to my report that I provided. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, consent agenda, items A through D.
I'll move to approve consent agenda, items A through D.
Second.
Motion and second, any items that anybody would like to discuss? Okay, motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This proposal's contracts and agreements, authorization to bid the annual multi-municipal traffic line payment and statement marking contract. Was a mountain.
Mister Chairman, as the boards, we're part of the six municipal group that takes turns bidding, annually bidding our line painting for all of our roadways. It's Springersbury's turn to administer that bid process. This is just permission to advertise and bid the project.
Mister Chairman, I move to authorize township to bid and advertise the annual multi-municipal traffic line painting with payment marking contracts.
Second.
Motion and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have authorization to enter into Cody Systems upgrade to Cody Pathfinder and amount not to exceed fifty four thousand five hundred and seventy three dollars.
Mister Chairman, the Cody System is a records management system that our police department uses. This is a proposal to upgrade that, staying with Cody, but a different version of Cody. This is in the two thousand and twenty four capital budget. If there are any questions, I could have the chief come up to go over more of that.
This is budget agreement.
It is.
Questions?
Mister Chairman, I move to authorize township to enter into agreement with Cody System to upgrade the Cody Pathfinder and amount not to exceed fifty four thousand five hundred and seventy three dollars.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Subdivisions on land development, we have S D twenty twenty two dash zero 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 one. Jason E. and Lindsay J. Shields, thirty five, thirty four Rock Valley Road.
Good evening to the Board of Supervisors, just to provide a brief introduction here. This is a two lot subdivision on a twelve plus acre property located at thirty five, thirty four Rock Valley Road. We do have a representative here for the Shield, Mister Ben Kirk with Virgin Associates. And we also, Mister Shield, available here tonight as well to answer any questions the Board of Supervisors may have. With that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Mister Kirk to explain the project.
Thanks, Colonel. Good evening, I'm Ben, Burgan Associates. Currently, a brief is we have a twelve acre tract here with an existing dwelling on it, serviced by a private well and public sewer. There is a existing sewer line that runs down through the lower property. It's currently twenty feet wide. What we're proposing to do is create Propose Lot Three, being a building lot, being one point one acres in size with access on the Druck Valley Road. It'll be tied to the public sewer with a proposed thirty foot wide sanitary sewer easement tying into the existing manhole on reconfigured Lot Two. It'll be serviced by a private well. We have been to planning commission, been through their comments, got their recognition for approval. We're asking for seven waivers and six deferrals. Most of those waivers require this plan that are covered by a note that if the township ever does come through there and place curbs, gutters, sidewalks, and street lights, they will be constructed within six months notice of that time. The rest of the deferrals are to stormwater or E N S. That way, at the time, we know what house is gonna be constructed there and driveway size, all that can be calculated to the correct nature. It's gonna be built instead of assuming at this point. So, that'll come back in with the plan that reflects that in nature. And a lot of that will cover the storm, water, sewer profile, tie in the sewer outlet, obtaining H F P permit, and all those natures. Any questions about the plan?
So, I guess I'm just concerned about a point of order. You're asking for driveway access, and from my understanding, ten dot chapter four forty one regulates driveways. And that is usually approved before it would come to us for that variance.
So, what we're doing is asking for that. We do show that there is a driveway on there with a painful site distance to show that it does meet the requirements for that. So, a pain permit now would be underneath the Shield's name, the conditional approval. That's only good for a year, so if it's not constructed and done in that time, we have to do a transfer of the name. So, we're looking for, what we're looking for, for deferable H F P permit to the title of the manhole, so we can get underneath the correct owner's name who's gonna build on that lot. And there's notes in there that say cover all that, so we're not trying to not do it. It is, again, being deferred, and there's notes on there that say they need to obtain it before any driveway permit is gonna be issued there, and you will not issue a building permit till you see that we do have the driveway permit.
So, let's just think this out a little bit. If, if we decide to move ahead and you divide that, and then go ahead and sell it, change the name on it, and they can't get a driveway permit because of, and what does that do to your whole situation?
Well, we show that there is a payable area that I do get it, so there should be no reason they would not get a permit. We do show it's like this and some occasion to their standards that we meet the requirements for a safe site distance, so I'll do the pen note.
Any comment from our engineer?
Well, I did talk to the consultant before, and I did mention that because Druck Valley Road is considered a collector road, if the township passed an ordinance saying any additional driveways onto Druck Valley would need to be consolidated into a single driveway for, for access purposes, and that's another waiver that they're, they're requesting. Our ordinance prohibits subdividing and adding additional driveways. And we discussed that at planning commission briefly, and I think the response was that they didn't want to have to have a shared driveway with easements and things of that nature. But, you know, the concern that the township had when they adopted that ordinance was that there was numerous homes being subdivided, multiple driveways, specifically on Mount Zion Road where they enacted, they enacted, reenacted the ordinance to try to control the number of driveways to the collector or collector road.
We, we had a discussion at the planning commission meeting, and we felt since we were proposing one new residential lot, we're not proposing twenty new driveways on the Druck Valley Road. And then we would have to cross sewer easements, create an agreement between neighbors that can sometimes be tricky to deal with. It's much better to have your own driveway than have a shared driveway. That would be feasible for one lot subdivision to have access on the Druck Valley Road. That's the discussion at the planning commission went with their approval.
John, when did we make that change to try to get a shared drive?
I'm gonna say probably in around two thousand and ten is when that, that got enacted.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that I find that argument not to abide by our previous ordinance very convincing. We, we, we made a decision to not allow additional accesses to these roads, and we did it for a reason. There's always reasons to not do what we wanted, but we wanted it then, and I think we should still want it now.
I believe, I believe it does say in the ordinance that if we, the engineer would be able to determine that there's a safe, as John can correct it on all, if you determine it is safe, that that is still allowable, correct? Will your letter say it?
It, it does state that if, if there, you know, if you, if you need reasonable access, that the engineer could recommend that. And I guess my point was, when we went to the planning commission, I felt that the driveways could be consolidated.
But do you have an opinion that they, that two separate driveways would still be safe? So, to side drive business?
It, it's not so much the safety, it's the, it's, it's the traveling public. If you have people driving and people are willing to turn into their driveway, they create a delay for the boat, the other motorists on, on the, on their travel route. The development across the street, and if you were looking at aerial photograph, that development all funnels on the Druck Valley Road. And basically, if those homes instead had five or six or eight or ten driveways, that would become a pretty congested area. So, I think justice won, now, but when the next guy, and the next guy, and the next guy, and you begin to have multiple driveways. And I think that was the impetus of, of adopting that regulation back in two thousand and ten. These driveways were coming on a pretty busy roadway, and people said, how do we, what can we do to prevent that? And York Township, or not York Township, York County Planning Commission said, hey, in the interest of access management, if we adopt this ordinance, that will prevent additional driveways that will have an impact on traffic throughout the community. So, that's why it was adopted.
Good evening, I'm Jason Shields, the owner applicant, and just really quick, I heard of reasonable in this discussion, and I'm not arguing with anything that's said. I understand the ordinance, but if you look at the drawing, we're asking for a waiver to put a driveway directly on the Druck Valley Road from the proposed building lot. If I was to share access, we would have to bring a driveway from east to west across the open field, and then across a roadway that I established, property owner established before I bought it with the township for that sewer. So, the driveway would then go across that roadway that we need to keep open for the township access to the sewer, and then onto my driveway. So, reasonably, it makes sense to approve this waiver to enter the roadway, Druck Valley Road, directly from that lot, and not over a roadway that I have with the township for that sewer main on my property.
And we, we are increasing that size of the survey also to thirty, thirty feet.
At the request of the planning commission.
Good evening, I'm Joe Burgett from Burgett and Associates. Also, I understand the ordinance as well, and if you were doing a subdivision of ten, twelve, fifteen lots like Mister, the engineer had mentioned, makes total sense to bring in one road. We're only making one lot, and it's not a public, this is gonna be a public roadway. This is gonna be a private roadway, which I believe anybody probably can understand that who's gonna want to share or private roadway with somebody, be certain they have their tip. Now, also, too, Penn Dot in the four forty one will allow you to have two driveways for six hundred feet of frontage. There's six hundred feet of frontage here. Honestly, there's five ninety two. We're really close to that six hundred feet. So, if I was applying for driveway permit from Penn Dot right now, they would allow me to have probably two here. So, again, we're creating one lot, and then we're putting a burden on the homeowner with a private roadway, which nobody likes to share. If this was a development, completely agree that you should be bringing one driveway and one road into that development. That's all we're doing here. It's one lot, very safe site distance. We provided site distances on the map, and we're eliminating that private roadway, which, I don't know if Springersbury Township has issues with private driveways, but I know our, some municipalities around my neck of the woods, people come in complaining all the time to townships that this guy isn't doing his maintenance on his roadway, dah 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 dah. I don't think we're creating one lot here is hurting anything, especially when Penn Dot would allow two per six hundred feet. It says it right in the four forty one. So, that's my opinion.
So, looking at the satellite photo of this area, there is some population density. And John, you mentioned that the Druck Valley is an important road, collector road, and that one driveway here, one driveway there, maybe, isn't as critical. How do we know when that next driveway, or that marginal driveway, is the critical driveway that creates the traffic and impact?
Well, I, I got, that's a very good question, and it's, it's hard to say, but as traffic, as people travel, and, you know, the, the next guy on the lot, if he has a five acre lot, and he wants to create two, two additional driveways for three lot, now those cumulative number of driveways onto a collector street now become more challenging for the people who live out further east and wanna go to Druck Valley Road. That's, that's when it becomes problematic for the traveling public. And so, the, the whole goal is fewer driveways are safer. I'll, I'll first say that. If you have, if you have sixty driveways versus two driveways, the two driveways are much safer than sixty driveways. And so, I don't know what straw that breaks the Campbell's back, but that was the, that was the thought to try to curb the number of new entries onto the roadway. Well, minimum lot size, Mister Worster, is one acre. So, technically, you know, he had, this individual had, he had minimum frontage also. Could you create three building lots out of this parcel? That, that's certainly a possibility. There's public sewer there, not public water. But what's to stop, what's to prevent somebody from coming in and saying, you know what? We're gonna draw another property line between house, which is on lot one, and a new house in between those two parcels. That's, that's how I think it becomes more complicated when people are, are subdividing off their property for development.
I think it's appropriate at this time to just give you a little history about the lot. So, this property has been in my family. They were tenant farmers in the eighteen hundreds and purchased the property in nineteen oh two. And I purchased it from Lloyd Beersen, my great grand, my great uncle, in two thousand and fifteen. The purpose of this lot is to allow a brother of mine to come share a family property with me. There's no intent, and I'll sign any legal document that I have to, to say that I'm gonna not subdivide another lot off this property. The other thing is, I would lose cleaning green if I would do some of this property. But this property is very important for generations of this family. I have no intent, no desire, other than to share this with one other person in my family. And I, I don't, I don't think one driveway on Druck Valley, a not, I mean, we, we can do a traffic study if you want, but to say the one driveway is gonna be an inconvenience to someone and have to break to get home from work, rather than bring a driveway across a roadway for a sewer that I have to maintain and keep open for township access, what's the, what's the more reasonable course of action here?
So, so the, the comments that you just made then sort of confused me with respect to the previous argument that having a common drive would cause great difficulty in negotiating agreements with the various use, users of that drive, which didn't mention that it was all in the same family.
I, I understand that, but I can't guarantee that my brother bought the property. The intent is to have that happen.
Yeah, which is exactly the problem.
He has to find a job in this area, find a builder, do all of that. So, intent and execution, two different things.
Which is exactly the problem.
Offer that to my brother.
And, and, and that's exactly the problem when we do a subdivision, because when we sit, do a subdivision, no matter what anyone's intent is, the subdivision is done, and it's over. And once that's subdivided, you know, the, the owner can do anything that he can do, that he wants to do with that project, that, that property. So, that, that's one of our concerns. You know, I, I'm sure that you have the best of intentions, but we've been burned by that in the past.
I mean, I guess I'd ask you to define anything I want. Doesn't the township have a say?
Well, once, once it's subdivided, we lose, there's lots of things that, that can happen. Once it's subdivided, then we don't have any say, I don't believe, in terms of how many, how many connections can be made to Druck Valley Road.
Um, but I'm only asking for one lot, there can only be one driveway on that lot.
But, but once it's subdivided, then someone can come in here, just like our engineer was talking about, and, you know, it, it, it ends up in someone else's hands who said, okay, well, let's put, you know, maximum number of, of, of lots here, let's subdivide it again.
Oh, I'll retain the possession of the eleven acres.
Well, but, but, but that doesn't really make a difference to us, because as long as it's subdivided, we can't force you to continue to own it.
I mean, like, like I stated, we can put a deed restriction on it. I'm not moving or selling the eleven acres. I mean, like, like I stated, we can put a deed restriction on it. I'm not moving or selling the eleven acres.
I'd like to make a comment. I, I really appreciate all the input that's here. I think, you know, this thing's really been thought through very well. Appreciate all the insight. I'll just say that I personally am okay with having this driveway. That's part of the point.
Now, just for clarification, did I hear that there are two driveways allowed in the six hundred foot frontage?
In Pendott publication four forty-one, a residential lot entitled to one access point unless the department may allow an additional driveway if the frontage exceeds six hundred foot. And I know, I know, uh, it was reported that it's five hundred and eighty-eight feet or whatever, but the, the, the rulebook is if, if they had twelve hundred feet of frontage, I think the department would look at that. And I think that's when, when there was another waiver granted in this township, that frontage was far in excess of, of six hundred feet, and that was the justification to allow a second driveway onto a state highway.
As, as long as it can't be more than two, then I'm with George. I, I think it's a reasonable thing to, to put a second driveway in. Particularly the way the property is subdivided to try and extend that property all the way to the east to tie into the existing driveway doesn't make a lot of sense to me. On the other hand, our concern is that if something happened and this property was sold, I mean, we don't intend that. But if the property was sold, then the next guy that came in said, look at all those acres, I've got eleven acres here. You may, you know, a development, I'll put one more driveway in, and I'll tie into eight more lots. We don't want to get into that situation. So it's, it's one of the two, by its frontage, that I'm very well aware of.
We, and, and Mr. Shields can correct me from Rome, but I'm sure he would be willing to sign some sort of needed of, of a needed restriction on a property that if it was ever to be developed, all driveways must come out to Druck at one location. If it was ever resubdivided, then all of them must come out to Druck at one location.
As deed restriction or is it a, you know, deed restriction?
As deed restriction, absolutely.
Yeah, you can put it as a note on the plan as well. Is that a kind of deed party yourself?
I'm, I'm full record willing to do that.
Charles, comments, thoughts?
I, I have one. Go ahead, go ahead.
But as indicated, it is a, a pretty dense area, but I do appreciate the uh, the fact, while this is in the northeast quadrant, part of this effort is really to add some improvements to the properties. We're gonna have two pay driveways. There is some family heritage effort to preserve uh, this. I guess it does have the legacy of being a farm property. You mentioned the cleaning green.
Yes.
So I think that, to be extended, we're, we're moving forward with a subdivision plan, creating an extra household in this section of the township uh, that I'm fine with this addition driveway is that we have it prepared early, as proposed here in the plan.
Don, you were gonna say?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure that I, and a slightly different subject. I don't understand the reason and for the waiver for highway occupancy permit.
That's, there's notes on there. It's, it's a deferral. It's a waiver, waiver, I don't, it's under deferral.
I don't understand what a deferral is. That's not a word that I don't get.
That's just how we are asking for on this plan. That's a deferral.
And, and how is that different from a waiver?
Because we're gonna defer it to the time of the stormwater ENS plan, that the new owner will apply for the driveway permit.
For, for clarification, I, on the plan summary, I did provide it as a waiver, basically stating that it's similar to the deferral in that sense, that they're still going to have to do it. They're just not doing it as part of this subdivision plan. When you file that other uh, ENS and stormwater management plan, that's, it's gonna be continued upon them getting that approval from Pendott for the additional driveway.
So could we make it as a condition to get the highway occupancy permit and not waive it?
I don't think that it doesn't meet their intent.
I think the answer is gonna be if they made application to Pendott today, then Pendott would ask the, the question, all right, fill out your, your application. It would be a minimum use driveway permit. It's a one major. They'd say, how many parcels are there? The answer would be one.
Okay.
And then they would say, you're getting one driveway. That's all you're getting. And they want to record this plan, create two deeds, send that deed to Pendott saying the lot number three on the plan needs a driveway permit, which Pendott would provide. As long as they met the site distance, which I don't, I believe they would.
But by the same thing, if this is a Pendott requirement, we can't waive it, right?
Uh, they're talking about a deferral. If we say, if you made it a condition of this plan approval, that they get a Pendott highway occupancy permit, they would go up to District Eight or they'd file it online and play and file your, your Pendott permits. Pendott would, would look at the tax map and deed book and page number, and they'd say one driveway. That's all you're getting for that twelve acre. They're already there. They're maxed out.
I know what we're saying is, they can't apply for the driveway permit on the single acre lot.
Correct.
Unless the subdivision is done, which requires a waiver for them to do that.
Correct. You have the whole picture.
And the plan clearly stated that's asked to happen.
All right. So then we could subdivide it and they could never go for that very precious driveway, which is hostage to the, that is interior, right? They could not ask for it.
Right. If you made, if, and I'm, I'm not sure I heard it correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. If you made that condition, they wouldn't be able to they, they, they spin their wheels and they'd be saying, okay, we can't do a subdivision without.
Yeah.
On the other end of things though, if we do waive it, it gets subdivided, they may not get the driveway in.
No, to answer your question, I, I think the two deeds would go up to Pendott and they would have parcel number three, and the owner of parcel number three would say, I have this lot on Druck Valley Road. It's a one acre parcel. Here's the recorded subdivision. Here's my deed. Provide me reasonable access to the state highway.
And the state would grant.
They would be obligated to grant it.
Are there any other items on here that anybody wants to discuss?
I, I know there was some discussion before about the connecting a lateral from the new parcel to the sanitary sewer. And I didn't understand it then, and maybe there's nothing to it. I imagine Mr. Hodgkinson is knows that much better than I do.
I was here when that sewer main went through, believe it or not.
So, so there's not a problem connecting a lateral right into there? Is that the plan?
There's not. Uh, they have to bypass pump and if it is a busy sewer main, but that'll be on them to do that. But constructability, no, there's no problem with that.
So it's a main, not a lateral?
It's, that's a main going down. That's what serves.
You allow that into the main?
Yeah. Same as the main in the street. That's no different.
Okay.
This is coming down through a field. That's what serves all Rocky Ridge area.
I remember what that one is.
Nineteen ninety-six.
And so, and the other, the only other thing that I don't understand is if there wasn't a, a suggestion by the owner that a deed restriction would be acceptable. I don't know what the mechanics are, if that's something that we would insist on and and how you do that and when you do that.
We can, we can also put it on the plan there also.
So we would just add that as a condition of approval that um,
Yeah.
The deed restriction is.
With the deed restriction, yeah, a note to the plan.
And a note, note to the.
Note to the plan that no further driveways will, shall be permitted on any other lot. Come up with a language, but we can certainly review that.
Yes, what we could do is put the note on and we can file a new deed with that, with that section and restriction right on the deed.
And we, we have provided a legal description along with the sewer easements. That would just go, we need that, we can show that to, which we haven't provided.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, with regard to plan number SD twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 one, I move for approval of the following waivers. Section two eighty-nine dash ten, section two eighty-nine dash eleven, C one, two, five, and seven. Section two eighty-nine eleven C five. Section two eighty-nine eleven C seven. Section two eighty-nine dash twelve A two F. Section two eighty-nine twelve A five B. Section two eighty-nine thirteen B three. Section two eighty-nine dash thirty-one. Section two eighty-nine dash thirty-two. Section two eighty-nine dash thirty-six. And section two eighty-nine forty-one dot A four. Call it as up one though, track and cheat.
So modifications for number eight, nine, ten, and waivers for those.
Waivers for the rest, modifications for eight, nine, correct, as presented.
Make sure I understand my question.
That is correct. Well, second.
And so the, I'm not, so I'm, I'm not clear on the deferral requests on the plan with is that, how are we gonna deal with that?
So it's, if I understand it, John, you need to help me out here, but we are subdividing it without a highway occupancy. As part of their ENS plan, they're gonna have to get a highway occupancy permit. But the, in order for them to do that, they have to have the subdivided lot to show it to Pendott. So in a sense, we are waiving their requirement for the subdivision to have the highway occupancy permit placed. But they can't get the driveway without. So.
In essence, what I did uh, is the deferrals has, in essence, become waivers and no modifications. The deferrals have become waivers. They are playing as a deferral, but in essence, we're, we're waiving that as it'll occur with that next process.
But in actuality, it's not a deferral because if we waive it now, then Pendott will rent them access because they need access for that lot.
Yeah, that's.
Correct, correct.
So my decision is right now.
Right. That's why it has to be a waiver now, though, that otherwise they can't.
Well, my, my concern is that the incongruity between our motion and the plans that have been presented to us. This can.
The deferral conditions that are gonna have to happen.
We're in acceptance to the manager's uh, waiver, waiver letter, so. I got the manager, okay, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. They, yeah, I'm sorry. Okay, so we would be in favor of the, the letter that was just presented by the township and, and a motion made by Mr. Burgen.
They can simply change the wording on the plan to indicate a waiver rather than a deferral. I mean, that's somewhat semantics here, but I think that's a simple solution.
The Robson stands, they just got the, but as a condition, change the deferrals later.
And then the conditions for the for the deed restriction and the note on the plan.
Correct.
That's not that's not part of the waivers and modifications.
So, does that work?
Um, I, I'd rather have our solicitor say it works than have me say it works.
Yes. I'm okay with what you guys are discussing right now. Which is taking the plan and changing the word deferral to driveway, yes.
So there is a motion on the table.
What'd you say?
There is a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No. Motion carries through, you should.
Mr. Chairman.
And I, and I say that just to be clear, that I'm, I'm not happy about not following our ordinances. And the implication that uh, Pendott has a reason for not having multiple driveways within a six hundred foot range. What we've done is allowed that subdivision to come in, which reduces that size, but forces Pendott to have to provide that. So we're, in essence, finding a way to for not only our own, but also Pendott's um, rationale. So that's, that's my thoughts on it. But the motion carried. Now, conditions.
Mr. Chairman, with regard to SD twenty twenty-two dash oh 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 one, I move for adoption of the plan subject to the following conditions. Section two eighty-nine thirty-eight B, section two eighty-nine thirteen A, seventeen, and section two eighty-nine forty-one A one. Section two eighty-nine thirteen B three. Section two eighty-nine forty-nine dot L. Separate condition of mending the plan to remove the word deferral and replace it with waiver relative to the highway occupancy permit. And a condition that the owner entered into an easement agreement forever restricting any additional uh, subdivision of the lots.
Is that the proper word?
Not, not a deed restriction.
Or deed restriction.
Deed, I said deed restriction.
Yeah.
You said, you said.
You said, oh.
Forever subdividing the lots.
I'll hear some lines for one point of access. Is that correct?
Yeah. Well, now's the time. I mean, the, the thought was, I heard both. I heard that you weren't going to subdivide either lots for.
Which one, what was it?
I think it would be best to just leave that subdividing option open, but it would only be one access. If it was further subdivided, one access is broken.
But if you subdivide. don't we kind of get into that sort of circumstance again whereby?
There's more and more cars trying to come in and out of that one point.
Not, not so much of that, but.
That's enough allowed, you see, one access has to be for.
One access for.
The remaining.
Any of all the remaining acreage.
Yes.
No, even, even the existing lot, it would have to. So one driveway, where are you getting the waiver because of one new drive?
So, uh, uh, it, it sounds like we're going backwards from what was offered to us. Is that true?
Wherever this, maybe now to the Rogers, the program.
Okay, so we're just gonna just make the deed restriction, then we're subdividing. Period. Period.
That's why we're saying it works.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And you said aye, is that correct, Tom?
All right. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, where are we, communication from supervisors?
I just have one thing, and I think it's mainly for Mr. Hodgkinson's that, that, uh, those of us running the Alpha Board heard the other night that it's, that, yeah, our chief had met with you regarding, and Terry, regarding how papers and equipment that's been ordered, they don't arrive for years from now.
He did.
And you requested they come back with some additional ideas or something, the chief would be in contact with you to do. We had a preview of one of those options the other night, which obviously he'll global if he's. I just want to make a general comment that basically, from my perspective, this comes down to do we lease it or do we just pay for it upfront? And I would just say generally, as, and from my perspective, if we have the money in the bank, I'm more of a mindset not to go into debt and just pay our shit upfront. But I'll defer to your and Terry's expertise in terms of what our future budgets are gonna look like, if that makes sense.
Well, I appreciate that, and that was one of the things I did bring up when the chief met with me tw- me twice actually, it was a one-on-one, to bring me up to speed on everything. And then he coordinated a meeting between all three managers and their finance people and the, um, financing person. And I brought it up both times, is there an option to not go and just pay for it? Wish they said that there was, but.
And my understanding is, letting this power cannot to do that, the other teams can finance it if they so choose.
That's my understanding as well.
So I just want to share that, that's, um.
Thank you.
Anything else?
I'm recording, I, um, how much he asked me, who is my son's father-in-law was in town, and I wanted to publicly thank both Mark Hodgkinson and the chief for showing him through the new building, he was ecstatic.
Oh, that's rude.
Absolutely loved it, and they gave him the seventy-five cent floor, not the twenty-five cent floor. See everything.
Didn't get the full dollar for it.
He didn't get it.
Didn't see the other ones.
That would have included much.
Did I, did I incarcerate him in the holding cell?
He didn't, he didn't want to go in the holding cell.
Why about now?
I wish he had knew it, that he was in town. Um, let's see, solicitors report.
Nothing further to add, very important, unless there's any questions? James, on our meeting policy, condition F, might to read that, that means all of us could be virtual for a meeting.
Theoretically, yes, there's nothing that is preventing you from doing so.
For almost three years.
Right.
Correct, but again, maintain two-way communication, the public has the right to hear what you're saying and open dialogue.
So if there is an adverse weather event, we could revert to this, or?
As long as, as long as it's in your policy, there's nothing in the second-class township code or, or what I've done from a research perspective that prevents you from engaging now. As, as I discussed earlier, I wouldn't recommend it on a regular basis, but public likes to see you in person.
James, if there was ever a situation where all the board members had to be remote, would this still need to be available for the public to come here?
I believe so, yes, because there are other folks that are going to be.
Do they not have internet or whatever?
Correct, yes. Yes, you have to give them the access point to have the two-way communication that's happening through your virtual connection.
So that was what was suspended during COVID?
Cor- cor- correct, yes, but you opened up your, your virtual room to everybody.
Yeah.
To be able to, to do, but yes, that was suspended by COVID because it was emergency.
So, so that's a real interesting point, is that, does it make sense for us to actually say that in the policy? That the meeting, the traditional meeting, physical meeting room will always be available? Or must?
You could certainly add that in there, Mr. Fisher, absolutely. It is your policy, I'm just, I'm, I'm telling you from the legal perspective.
Because I think, I think, I think we should clarify, I mean, I think we, we want that to be there, I think, for the public.
Yeah.
I'm good anyway.
I'll update the policy and, uh, consider.
Can you, can, I, I just, what, can you define two-way communications? I'm not certain I understand exactly what that means, sounds simple until I really think about it.
Sounds like you two aren't communicating.
You have to have the ability to hear me, and I have to have the ability to hear you while we're talking over whatever medium that is.
And that's also true about anyone else in the public, that we have to be able to hear them? And they have to be able to hear us?
Correct, correct.
Okay, that's the part that wasn't a hundred percent clear to me, great, thank you.
Yep.
But we don't have to be able to see the public, I mean, right? Necessarily, if somebody doesn't want to be on camera and all, or doesn't have a camera, all that sort of thing, that doesn't matter.
No, it, it could be telephonically, your camera could be off, you had a study on, uh, on tonight. You don't need to be seeing, you need to know who they are, that they're from, you know, announcing right in their name.
Should we vote with that modification on this policy, or do you prefer to?
You, yes, you can vote on it with the modification, and I'll send it on the updated version.
Anyone?
I move to adopt the policy as amended.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Managers report.
The only thing that I'll update to my written report is just a reminder of the conditional use hearing next Wednesday at six o'clock in this room.
That is all.
Will we have some, um, PennDOT district gate there?
Don't think so.
Are, are, are we, are we giving the attorney the hour and a half to control the meeting that was requested? I mean, how's this gonna go? Do we know?
I assume it's gonna go just like all our other conditional use hearings and they'll, they'll give their testimony and however long that lasts, it was gonna last unless the board wants to put a time limit on how long they have. I, I don't know, James, are you allowed to hate that?
No, you, you can't put a time limit on, on their ability to present their case. You can certainly recess and move to another day if it's getting too long, but no, this is a, this is a hearing and subject of court hold, so, um, uh, if they're coming in, they, they're bringing numerous witnesses, I mean, you certainly have the right to say, I've heard enough, and then, and then stop, but no, you can't put a time limit on what this is.
And, and public comment also, right?
Public comment can be limited to three minutes, right, or is that?
Yes, but you have to give them, you know, opportunity to comment. Now, if you do have a party that steps in and says they're an interested party and they want to put on their case as well, then that changes the nature of the hearing, so.
Good.
Mark, is it possible that for that meeting as part of materials, we could get the prior information that was presented to us about that from the developer?
You would still have that handled, their previous, the developer's previous presentations.
Yeah, I think I have everything, I, I didn't discard anything, so. I've provided the current, the most current documents that I've got. Um, however, I do have additional documentation from previous presentations.
Can we put that in notice and, you know?
Yeah. We'll just date it, this one was presented on this date and.
Because I've seen some commentary that, that coming with that was a lot different than what was presented to us before the industry.
There are, there certainly are some differences from what you were originally presenting. I, I'll have that, you know, available tomorrow.
Yeah, Campbell's knows, doesn't he?
Modern wants to say, you don't monitor through the pad. Give them the hand, they take off to the foot. So, nothing else, Mark?
No, that was.
Any questions for our manager? Okay, back to ordinances and resolutions, we have resolution on twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, designation, designation of zoning officer and deputy.
Doctor, the resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-nine, making Benjamin McHugh as the zoning officer and John Luciano as the zoning officer for the year.
Second.
Motion in the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We had, uh, some information sent to us about the spring is very tangible, volunteer fire company bylaws. And, yeah, but it was, maybe it was one too.
Well, that was the original question that was posed to Supervisor Cox, was there hasn't been an audit done and.
Correct.
Whoever wrong, um, I haven't gathered more, I have not gathered more information today.
There was also the question of, um, at least I think we talked about it, on how long the director had to give a number prior to assuming an office, right? I mean, it's highlighted on here, I thought I remembered that we had a discussion about that. And there were several other highlighted sections in the amended bylaws.
There, there was a time in history when, you know, we weren't sure that there were actually enough members available to fill all of the necessary slots to keep that as an organization, which I think is why some of those changes were made.
Question goes to my mind is, given the merger that took place in Sneakerwood, is this, is it now this responsibility that is responsible now for the Alpha?
But some of the information I need to try to obtain for the board?
Also, since this is a PDF, then it was preformated that for part of it, I couldn't do a search for audit anywhere. So I was trying to go through forty pages and find where the word audit was and ran out of time. So we can hold this for further discussion then?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion on items B, C, D, or E?
So I was gonna say, I know we got a lot done this couple of weeks, we have the joint meeting with the com plan, planning commission, but we don't have as much for, so sometime we gotta schedule that, or a session for it.
Yep. When do you actually start the budget planning?
Capital, the directors start getting their stuff together, like in August.
And expense?
That's, well, I should, I'm sorry, July, and then expenses in August.
Okay, so if we have this meeting, say, June timeframe?
I think that, yeah, it's like a, like a spring something.
You're gonna send us a note to find a date? And Charles isn't at, uh, Ocean City? Hey, there's something else? Manager, thank you.